I would like to start the forum by introducing the candidates for county commissioner. Once I introduce them, they will have two minutes to talk before I introduce the next candidate. We will start in District 1. First, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Philip Kemp.
Am I ready?
You're ready.
Thank you, Shannon. I appreciate the invitation to be here tonight and thank the county schools for their obvious interest in the city and relates to the county commissioner. My name is Philip Kemp. I live in Ashburn, North Carolina. I graduated from Ashburn High School in 1961. Served four years in the United States Air Force and then came out and got involved in the family business. Currently, I am in my 20th year as county commissioner, having served since 1992. I have enjoyed my tenure and look forward to another four more years if I can and I appreciate all of you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Now, let me introduce to you Ms. Linda Norton.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming out. I hope you received one of my flyers when you came in. It tells a little bit about my background and you can also find me on Facebook if you have any questions after this evening. I formerly ran for Ashburn City Council and that was my beginning in the political ring. I'm originally from Randolph in North Carolina. Actually, I have even a class here on this stage. I've performed on this stage with theatrical performances and I had beauty patterns on this stage. That was a pleasant reminder. Currently, I am an independent distributor of soups. On Facebook, I consider myself the Randolph County community net prior. I like keeping people informed of what's going on in our community. I study ancestry, so I like studying the history of people. I am an accounting major. I've got a four-year degree in accounting. I have done people's taxes. I am a prior military in the United States Navy and I serve my country honorably. I have many charities that I like to participate in. I have many hobbies. I like to forage. I like to walk for exercise. I like reading and I'm slightly an inventor. And once again, thank you for inviting me this evening and I hope you learn a lot about the different variety of commissioners up here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Mr. Kemp and Ms. Norton are the two candidates for District 1 in Randolph County. The other county commissioner seat being contested is District 5. I would like to introduce to you the first candidate running for District 5, Mr. Adam Brooks.
Good evening. My name's Adam. I'm a welder. I've been married for four years. I have a beard and I don't talk very much. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Next, we will have our second candidate running for District 5, who I would like to introduce to you, Mr. Arnold Lanier.
Hi, I'm Arnold Lanier, Randolph County Commissioner. I serve in District 5. I was born and raised in Randolph County. Attended and graduated from Farmer High School in 1968. Been involved in a lot of community aspects, a lot of different programs in the community. I've served on the Randolph County Board of Education for eight years. Got a feel for being a commissioner. God bless to do different things. And currently been on the board for eight years and running for reelection. I've got seven grandkids, three kids, seven grandkids and my wife. She worked with the school system for 33 years and I've always been interested in working hard on the students of Randolph County and helping the people of Randolph County make things work and appreciate all your votes coming out, all your support.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. At this time, we will begin asking the questions of the candidates. The first question will be asked by Taylor Cogle. The first question goes to Mr. Kemp. Mr. Kemp, what is your motive for wanting to serve as county commissioner?
Well, that's a good question. I have said I've served for the past, at least 20 years. I think we've accomplished a lot of things for Randolph County and Randolph County schools, Ashburn City Schools. I would like to continue serving and we've got several issues that are currently on the table that we need to complete and I would like to see those through.
Thank you. Ms. Norton, it's your turn for the same question.
As commissioner, my motive is to have a new focus on public properties. Our properties come in many forms, a variety of resources that are owned by each of us equally. The ownership of the infrastructures that improve our lives daily are our roadways, our schools, libraries and so much more. We even own some of the best business opportunities and entities such as the Alcohol and Beverage Consolidation. We are honored to be home of them and the ownership of the North Carolina Zoo at the present time. So through our focus, there will be an awareness. I have hoped to have an informed public that is on guard and mindful in the management and growth and the development of our public properties. Our properties are our prized possessions. We must guard against making bad choices that may affect us down the road. We must make choices which are good for the citizens of Randolph County and which provide continuity and consistency in our care of our properties and being ever so protective of all of our properties for the future citizens so that they one day will enjoy the properties as we do today. I will try to ensure that the properties, the choices and the freedoms of Randolph County citizens do not ever become second to any domestic or foreign deals. All decisions must be in the best interest of the citizens and the republic's properties. Awareness and knowledge are the only ways to protect our ownership in our current properties and at the end of the day, we will be protecting our rights to self-govern ourselves. In conclusion, please ask yourself, what would Randolph County look like and how would my life differ if I did not own a part of North Carolina Zoo or if you did not have say or controlling interest in your child's education?
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Mr. Brooks?
My main motivation for running is I am a libertarian and I wanted to bring libertarian ideas to Randolph County's local politics mainly because I think they're good ideas, good policies to be following, especially in times that we have right now economically. And the other major motivation I had was I am strongly opposed to the idea of the regional landfill and I just felt like there wasn't enough of the voices that were being represented and people that were against the landfill. So I played up my money and has ended up running.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Lanier?
Well, I'm running for office again to, like Mr. Kemp said, we've got a lot of things going on in the county right now and we've done a lot of stuff in essence for the school system over the years and I'd like to see our educational facilities, you know, see them keep growing. We've got some of the best facilities right now in the state of North Carolina in Randolph County and being a part of that over the years, I see a lot of needs there that we should deal with and it's just amazing how much Randolph County, the people in Randolph County want to do and serve and, you know, to help other children in Randolph County. And we're basically right now as commissioner, like Mr. Kemp said, we've got a lot of things going on and I'd like to serve another term and try to finish these things off. You know, as Mr. Brooks said, we've got landfills, big issue and things and we're listening to all citizens and concerns there and it's just, we're in this to help the people and serve the people and that's my motive for running for office.
Thank you, Ms. Lanier. The second question will go to Ms. Norton. Ms. Norton, what are your qualifications and education background?
Being a humble servant to the citizens of Randolph will probably prove to be my strongest qualification in my future. As I collected 3,600 signatures to be on the ballot as your commissioner, I learned so much about the county and her people. I can still learn, folks, which is a good qualification, I think. So that means I am able to listen to the people's voice, wouldn't you say? I am qualified teacher, a mother, a grandmother of four grandchildren and I have been a Girl Scout's mother and a helper for starters. Even as a homeschool mom with my fourth child, I learned the purest value of independent thinking and self-reliance. I have even helped several friends in their studies to obtain their DEDs. They all passed their test for Strife. I am a qualified real estate broker but inactive due to the lack of opportunities in this profession in Randolph County. Having worked many part-time jobs since the 1980s, I know the pains of the unemployed and the underemployed. I am qualified in the understanding of the debt poor middle. Also, I have done taxes for many in Randolph County, Davison and Guilford Counties. I know exactly who has received little help via the federal tax system. I have coined the term, the debt poor middle taxpayer. These are the people who are paying the tax bill for nearly 50 percent of their earnings if you analyze all the combined taxes. How can these people ever say for a rainy day qualified to know where the tax system is broken? I am. I have established and maintained an eBay store online, but currently I am a distributor, as I said earlier, and yes, I have a four-year degree in accounting.
Thank you, Mrs. Norton. Mr. Brooks?
My greatest qualifications are probably, number one, I'm about as average as it gets. I mean, I've worked in a small factory just outside of Hartsdale. Immediately after high school, I later found a job, moved out on my own and now I'm slowly working my way through college. And other than that, I have an unhealthy obsession with politics and study too much and stay up too late looking at everything.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Lanier?
As a lifetime resident in Randolph County, I've been a businessman, small business person, worked and dealt with many groups of people and I basically feel like that my biggest qualification is knowing that people know their needs and students as a school board member. I used to talk to students, janitors, those are the folks that know what's going on in the school system. I think that's, you know, one of my big qualifications, being able to talk to people and reason with people.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Mr. Kemp?
Well, as I said, I finished the Ashburn High School in 1961. Attended and went for the Air Force and then came out, went in the family business and was in the automobile business for 25 years and attended Hapron University at night. Semi-retired and I'm currently a real estate appraiser and have done that for the past 15 years. So I've traveled all over Randolph County and of course, an elected official, I started at the Ashburn City Board of Education, served five years on that board and as I said, 20 years on this board. So I have heard a lot of the needs and tried to invest my ability to make Randolph County grow, help the school system grow at both the city and the county.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
The third question will go to Mr. Brooks. Mr. Brooks, if you are opposed to raising taxes, then what solution do you have to fund more dollars into the schools to make us more competitive?
Didn't that question work? Didn't that question work?
Oh, I apologize. What priority will you place on equitable funding for Randolph County schools that is currently very well prepared by the school systems? Is increased property tax an issue you will support for public schools?
I mean, how he says that just so, you know, I can look mean. Now, equitable funding for the school systems, first of all, I don't think that funding for the school system works in any shape, way, shape or form. I'm more of a, I'm more sort of a school choice system. I'd like the parents to be able to take vouchers to different school systems who use for their own homeschooling, for private school, for charter schools. I think that's the initiative we need to look forward to.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Lanier?
Over the years, I've always felt like funding's been a big issue and as a school board member for eight years, you know, I saw the needs and helped, tried to help, you know, supplement those needs with, as far as facility needs, which you love the school boards, more involved in, you know, in all aspects of it. But at the commissioner level, our funding mechanism, we try to provide money for facilities, you know, the most of our budget goes to that. And I've always been a priority on funding. I know, you know, we don't rank as well in current expense and capital outlay, which that's something we'll discuss in a few minutes, but it's a tough situation. It takes a lot of money and since I've been in office, we've spent over $312 million on new school facilities in Randolph County. That is as a school board member and county commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Mr. Kemp?
Well, we have, as I say, and as Arnold said, we have built a lot of schools in the past sort of 20 years since I've been on the board. McCollum New Middle School, Double Cross Elementary School, Weymore High School, Robbins Road and the additions to the Ashburn City School. So we have spent a lot of money as far as facilities go. Sure, we may not be as high on the total code for total funding, but we do our best to spend equally as we can on both systems. It's a little unusual, we have two systems in one county. So we have to, we do, based on that, we do most of our funding on ADM formula based on the size of the school system. And so as far as taxes go, you know, the economy's not been very good lately. We've been challenged in a lot of areas, yet we have not taken away money from our schools as some counties have done. We've been able to maintain our level of spending that we have in the past few years. So by not cutting that, to me, is sort of an increase in funding for the schools. But if you want to have additional teachers and things of that nature, it's going to take, as city schools have and so does 18 Middle School, they have a separate middle school tax. So to get that extra funding, you need to have a referendum, get the people to support an extra tax that would go for teachers. That's just stated as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mrs. Norton?
Well, I hope everyone read the call here yesterday and one of the folks that's running in Mr. Lanier's district, I believe, and Mr. Kemp's district, Mr. Carter was talking about North Carolina being 49 from the bottom in education. That's pretty bad, dismal, in my opinion. But here's the answer to my question. I do not support raising taxes on anyone currently. The environment of the under and the unemployed is devastating Randolph County. I hope the school system can understand this approach. We need our current school systems, but we may need to change and advance our students into college curriculums and higher academics sooner. As I've always heard, we are in global competition. Well, let's get in the race, folks, to talk. I have a plan and it will involve the parents and students for they often are in the know of their needs before a busy teacher has the time to learn the names and personalities. It is time to make some tough and needed changes to compete with the foreign markets, I am here to say today. I have some ideas that I am researching, but until I know the exact positions of the budget and the general finances, I am not able to give the exact answer. Currently, we need to maintain what we have and take inventory on how to improve from within, but I feel there is room to improve and I look forward to working with the school boards and others on all ideas. I am open to anything in our power for improvements.
Thank you, Mrs. Norton.
The fourth question will go to Mr. Lanier. Mr. Lanier, if you are opposed to raising taxes, then what solution do you have to fund or more dollars into the schools to make us more competitive?
Well, at the local level, you know, you have some options. We had a quarter cent sales tax that was on the ballot at one time and it failed and those two monies have to come from the state level. And, you know, if you want to fund more money into the system, that's where the vast majority of it has to come. You know, we're living in an economy today that is probably 15 to 18 percent unemployed and underemployed people, you know, people with the gas prices and everything else like they are, people's got to get to work, they got to eat and they just got to be able to get from one place to the other. And, you know, I think we could probably use our dollars a little bit wiser and the school board, you know, they have these tax dollars that we send them every year and it has to come through the county. But, you know, our sales tax collections are down. A lot of things are happening right now, but the economy's causing all of that that we don't have that much control over, which, you know, we're hoping the economy will turn around and the tax dollar flow again. But over the past several years, it's just a bump in the road and we've got to clear that bump, we've got to work together and make things work. And I just feel like that, you know, this county has done it in the past and they can do it again and we'll work on doing it together.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Mr. Kemp?
Well, as I said earlier, we chose, I think the citizens of this county chose more to have facilities improved. We couldn't do but could improve facilities and throw in extra money to do. Well, we did because we built schools and then we've got to be able to maintain the schools. But there are so many other needs in the county. You know, we've got a sheriff department, we've got EMS, we've got a health department, we've got social services, we've got to build a courthouse and maintain that. There's so many things out there that the county is responsible for the funding and so everyone has their needs and so you have to try to spread that money as best you can. And I think we have done a fairly good job of that in the past, especially the way the economy is right now. We've been able to maintain, we have a very good savings account we've used now for the last three or four years that is getting to be on the thin side now, so we're going to have to even be more diligent with our spending. And so as soon as the economy turns around, no one really knows, but hopefully it will fall off and we'll be able to do some additional things. But right now, just trying to maintain what we've got is a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mrs. Norton?
Well, in question three, I started into how we have got to recreate what we already have. Change is not and will not be easy, but remember, I am a pro learner. But we are going to have to become more agile and competitive county-wide school system. I see a certain segment going towards what I would call, would love to see our schools accomplish, but they are not quite there, in my opinion. I have hopes that we will learn from our next group of our school board member candidates that they will, that they will follow. A more competitive solution for our shortages of funding and the need to have college completed or vocational degree of some sort near the age of 20 instead of 24 or 25. Please understand, we have to work for what is best for our county, our state and our country. But in yesterday's paper, once again, it was full of information for us. The title of the article was "City Odds Future Plans." They have done a research and it stated in there that there's only going to be by 2040, only 5,000 jobs in Ashburn added to what's currently there. I think that's very dismal and gloom, or doom and gloom. If that's the best we're going to get in Ashburn, I don't see much better in the county overall. And if that's the case, we had better learn to survive on our own and learn how to become competitive in our own little neighborhoods and learn how to produce on our own. And that could even be kind producing your own food, folks. I wish the best for Randolph County, but yesterday's newspaper is worth a read.
Thank you, Mrs. Norton. Mr. Brooks?
On the idea of raising taxes, I wouldn't care if everybody in this room was a billionaire. I don't want to take any more money from me than it's already taking. As for how to fund or give more money to the schools, I've never seen a problem get solved by spending more money on it. In the recession, all you hear is being able to do more with less and I think that needs to be the motto and mantra of every aspect of government and every aspect of the, particularly the education system here in Randolph County. That's my principle on the idea.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. The fifth question will go to Mr. Kemp. Mr. Kemp, what are some areas of change you would implement to improve Randolph County?
Well, to begin with, our revenues come from property taxes. That's about all the revenue we have other than what comes through state and federal government or pastors. So our property taxes are currently taking a pretty big hit because of the property devaluation in some areas. So we cannot raise taxes at this point in time, so we have to look outside of the tax area. We're currently looking to build a regional landfill. Some may like it, some may not. We have not made a decision yet, but it is a significant opportunity to provide jobs for folks here in this county. We need jobs and this would bring several new jobs to Randolph County. Also, we need to keep our tax rate and our business climate inviting, bringing additional businesses here and go easy on the regulations that we have that would harden businesses from getting started. So we just have to look at the overall picture and try to do what's right for the existing economy that we're in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mrs. Norton?
What would I change in Randolph County? Well, the word depreciation. Our county is great, but depreciation is one area that is ignored until it destroys the community. Just as a business gets to take depreciation on a piece of equipment, shouldn't a person with a mortgage, home mortgage, get depreciation? We need to fix this area in our tax code, but it might take in being more than a commissioner for me to get that done. Number two, I'd like the thing called a free trade zone for us American people. I'd like to see one throughout the county, a free trade zone. Have a kind, it's kind of like a flea market, but you would have the areas free to the people, to barter, to trade and to sell, all they have in a no tax-free zone. We've got to start doing something, folks, and that would be a good start instead of having a yard sale at your home. We also need to re-educate our citizens on the rule of law. War deploys to everyone, not just a select few. We have a fourth branch of government and it is we the people. We have a fourth branch of government, and it is we, the people. The three main branches, the executive, the legislator, and the judicial, often would like to ignore we, the people. And I enjoy knowing that each Randolph County citizen exercises and knows all their rights and liberties. Truly, I want to make sure we keep our so-called law operating in Randolph County, even if it is a computer on a table in the corner of the clerk of court's entrance hall. We all need case law once in our lives.
Thank you, Mrs. Norton. Mr. Brooks?
My primary focus is on finances and economics. I'd like to, number one, start, instead of seeing Randolph County try to compete with other counties, trying to bring in one or two large businesses. I'd like to see us focus more on small business, maybe by offering a tax holiday to businesses that open up for a certain period of time. I'd also like to focus more on the county budget, going through it line by line, finding everything that can be cut. Would like to set a benchmark of maybe 10% of the county budget to get cut. And then instead of, and after we hit that, I'd like to look at the percentage of the tax collections that we do spend, and maybe set it more around 75 or 80% instead of 98 to 99% of the spend. That way, we can set some aside for, to rebuild the savings account, like we, or as Commissioner Kent said, that is already being completed, and also use that money for property tax cuts to individual property owners, homeowners. And those would be my two major focal points at the beginning.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Leneer?
Well, I'd like to see us keep doing what we're doing. Three years ago, we made a major cut in county government. We cut our budget almost $119 million back to $111 million, which that's what it was this current year. And we're cutting things, trying to make things work. And I think, you know, that's something we need to look at. As a county, we're paying off debt every year. You know, we built a couple of new high schools in the county, and that increased our debt almost $78 million. And right now, our debt service in Randolph County, we're paying almost 90% of our debt, because we're paying for county schools and Ashboro City schools. And that's, so there's a lot of money going into education. We're providing this money, you know, the commission has allocated this money for these projects and to improve the school systems, and so you have a great place to go. But we're still working to improve Randolph County. I know there's a lot of things that we need to do. I'm a proponent of small business. I think that's, Randolph County depends on that a lot. And like Mr. Brooks said, I'd like to see more small business come to the county. And our economic development has done a great job in trying to recruit jobs and bring more jobs, I mean, bring jobs into the county. And they've done a lot in the last three years, so, you know, we need to keep working on that. But I'd like to see government become smaller.
Thank you, Mr. Leneer.
The sixth question will go to Mrs. Norton. Mrs. Norton, how do we bring more industry jobs to Randolph County?
It is called supply and demand. Where there is a need, the demand will give way to suppliers, if the cost and the profit are fair. I am very concerned that we are not prepared totally for what is coming our way within the global working markets. Randolph County needs to have a website connecting the people and the day jobs, or vice versa. Craigslist is an example of what this idea would entail. I would like to have a free flea market in the county, as I stated earlier, for our citizens to trade, to sell, barter amongst each other. We've got to get to know each other, folks, maybe more than we want. I hope that we can become producers once again, but without the foreign traffic. I believe in import taxes, instead of all the other taxes that are placed on the American people. But the worry should be how would the jobs come back to our country? Are we willing to allow free trade zones to come to our county with influence of the external people to be overpopulating our job market further? Please go to my personal website and see the video by Diane Sawyers concerning the antropes of China. It's very informative. I can only hope that you will understand the meaning of the video as I have. And remember, in the paper yesterday, only 5,000 jobs by 2040.
Thank you, Mrs. Norton. Mr. Brooks?
As an essence, it sounds to talk about bringing jobs to the county, the fact of matter is, nothing anybody on the stage does will ever affect one job, except maybe to eliminate it. So I would like to see the government just completely stay out of the job market as much as possible, that's through the taxes, through the regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Leneer?
I think we'll bring more jobs to the county by having economic development, which we started three or four years ago. We funded through the county budget, and, you know, they're in contact with all different aspects of the industries, all different job markets, and, you know, bringing jobs here, a lot of times you see this word, broadens incentives. And, you know, that's something that's, that could really bring a lot of jobs, and it might not bring a lot of jobs in, you know, the right situations. But, you know, the small job market is a big boost for Randolph County. I think we need to try to work hard with our community college and technology, and I think that would help bring more jobs to the county, you know, specialized jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Leneer. Mr. Kemp?
Well, as Arm mentioned, we have in Randolph County, you know, the Development Commission, which was actually started about 15 years ago. They have been responsible for bringing in quite a few industries to Randolph County. One of the latest and biggest is, well, it was bought to the, you know, it's mom's burn now. They're going to have, by the time they finish adding on and building to their specifications and putting the equipment in there, they're going to have invested over $250 million in Randolph County. That's significant. So our people at EDC have been out working hard, they've worked through the Department of Commerce in Raleigh. If there's people looking to locate in various forces of the state, we lots of times get a good look from some of these people, sometimes we don't even know who's looking at us, and never will. They look at so many things that, they look at our demographics and our school systems and our recreational areas, our churches, everything that they take into consideration before they contact you about wanting to come to your county. So it's very, very competitive. Of course, we have to give incentives to get those jobs. But those incentives are not just giveaway. They have to meet qualifications that they oppose, such as number of jobs, extra number of dollars of equipment, things of that nature. And once they've done that, and we've verified that, then they get some incentive. But if they leave before they're supposed to, then they have to give the money back, which, you know, they did. So there's a lot of ways that we work on that, and we're working hard to bring more jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. There is a rebuttal by Mr. Brooks.
Just more of a out loud question. If they had $250 million to spend and invest in the county, then why did they need the county to take money from the taxpayers and give it to them before they would do it?
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
The seventh question will go to Mr. Brooks. How will our community benefit from your position as county commissioner? I'm going out of order on the question.
Should I be mean to you? Okay. The community will benefit by me being inconsequential, or at least that would be my hope. I want to have absolutely nothing to do with your life, and that's really the end of the period. The less government is involved in your life, the better you are.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Leneer?
Could you repeat that question again?
Of course. How will our community benefit from your position as county commissioner?
I think all aspects of the county will benefit, because I believe in free society, I believe in everyone that works hard, they should prosper. And I just think that, you know, what I've done over the years speaks for itself, you know, as a citizen in Randolph County and as elected official. And I've done a lot of things to try to help the people in Randolph County, of course, it's the taxpayer's money, and we got to spend it blind, and that's what I try to do as a commissioner. And I think I can continue to help the people in Randolph County. I live with them, I feel their needs every day, and understand, like all of us, what we have to endure to be successful.
All right, thank you, Mr. Leneer. Mr. Kemp?
Well, having, as I said, the experience that I have, always, we've learned a lot. We've learned what works and what does not. I know there's been some questions about the amount of debt we have in this county, that we should not incur this debt. Well, had we not done that, we wouldn't have all the good facilities, school facilities that we have. We went out on the land, we built these facilities, we put ourselves in a big debt situation. Of course, we had no idea the economy was going to turn like it did, so we're stuck with it, we've got to work our way out of it. But rest assured, if elected, if there's any other big, major expenditure for education such as facility, I would certainly vote for a bond referendum and let the people speak to this issue, as opposed to doing what we've done in the past by using certificates of participation. And if the folks in this county want to rent the school, or new school, or what have you, then let them speak, and we'll continue on as we. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mrs. Norton?
Are we on question seven or question eight?
We are on question nine. I can move you.
We're on question nine?
Yes.
So did we skip eight, seven, and eight?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, how will our community benefit from my position?
Well, I want to make sure I mention Agenda 21 tonight. Everyone needs to find out about Agenda 21 to go further, since we skipped two questions tonight. I hope to preserve that we can preserve what we have left in this downturned economy to be the greatest benefit to our community that I can aim to achieve daily. And preserving what is left, it will not be an easy fight from all the different borrowing techniques, which will turn, burden the debt poor middle class further. So with this economy, we must not hurry to the banks and borrow ourselves into more debt. I say preserve what we have while we can. Right now, every citizen, whether they are here today, at this event, or at home, or cannot attend because they are working, has the pleasure of living in the greatest state in the United States of America, and the best county in North Carolina, Randolph County. We need to preserve all we have for future generations after us. In conclusion, as I am going forward in my efforts to obtain the best for all of Randolph County citizens, remember, I firmly believe in the awareness and that we will preserve, that I will preserve, and be the best commissioner you could ever elect. Long live our Constitution, under God's law, with common law.
Thank you, Mrs. Norton. There is a rebuttal by Mr. Leneer. Do you have a minute?
And Mr. Kemp mentioned, you know, the COGS thing. 1994, I was school board member then, and we spent $2.5 million on this school right here, on several schools, and by using the COGS form, we had. We done a 10-year plan, we got everything in place, and we ended up, the state had programs, they put some money in the facility needs, we picked up $32 million of matching funds when we done that. So, you know, when I was 11, I come off the school board, I see a need for two new high schools, Weymore and Providence Grove. I got some commissioners, all of us sending in, all body together, to fund those schools. So if you want to blame somebody for the two schools that you said were built, you can blame me for it, but, you know, they wasn't going to do it until I was elected, so I will take that for you. We've got two fine high schools out there, and we'll get them paid for.
All right, thank you, Mr. Leneer. Thank you very much. That'll be the end of the question.